All right, seven o'clock, we will go ahead and call the meeting to order. Welcome to our regular board meeting, today is Monday, January nineteenth of two thousand and twenty-six. Thank you all for braving the cold and coming out. I didn't really expect anybody here, instead we got a full house, so that's awesome. So we got some good stuff coming up. So I'll ask, Michelle will take, Ms. Clark will take a roll call for us, and then I would ask for approval of the consent agenda items that are listed below, which include the approval of minutes from the regular board meeting on December fifteenth of two thousand and twenty-five, Board Academy meeting on January fifth of two thousand and twenty-six, the special school board meeting on January sixth of two thousand and twenty-six, the closed session on January sixth of two thousand and twenty-six, the payment of bills, the employee resignations, the employee hires and contracts, the alternative open enrollment applications, the Toma High School ESS waivers, and the Toma High School JAG Youth Leadership Conference, March nineteenth through the twenty-first of two thousand and twenty-six, which is an overnight trip to Wisconsin Dells. And then lastly would be the Toma High School Academic Decathlon Overnight Trip, February twenty-sixth of two thousand and twenty-six through February twenty-seventh of two thousand and twenty-six in Green Bay, Wisconsin, to compete at the state competition. So we have some of those items embedded, does anybody need anything pulled out?
Like two B and two C, please.
Alright, so two B, two C are not included, anything else, anybody? Otherwise, I would look for a motion to approve A, D, E, F, G, H.
So moved.
Alright, motion by Teresa, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Heidi, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, then we'll pull out the payment of bills.
Casey, I actually had a question referencing the student assistance. Is that based on enrollment or what, because I see there are different levels in those.
Um, those generate basically two ways. When students leave the district, parents many times just say, lunch and car money can stay with that school. So that money will go in there, and then also through community donations.
So they specify then?
Yeah.
Okay, I was just wondering, is it worth? Okay, thank you.
Any other questions on payment bills, or I'd look for a motion to approve it now?
So moved.
Motion by Teresa, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Sue, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, then C would be employee resignations.
Just a, just a quick question referencing that, is still the timing? That would be the pending school year, it would be at the end of this school year? Is that, yes?
Yes, if that, yes.
Okay.
That's twenty-eight, that's in twenty-five, twenty-six, and I do want to note, Dr. Sefranik, as a merry long tenure here in the district, and I'm new personally in the last six years, perhaps I've been honored to serve with him, so we're missing great, bar set very high, continue to look through those. With Board of Education, this week, together with the position of.
That's the reason I was asking, was it to fill? Okay, thank you. That's awesome.
Alright, if I don't have any other questions on that, then I look for approval of the employee resignations.
So moved.
Motion by Rick, second, second by Teresa, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, next would be communication to the public, we have two people signed up. I need to read a comment first, a few comments. The Board will now entertain public comments for up to thirty minutes. Please note that if you wish to provide public comment to the Board, you must register your intention to do so upon arrival at the meeting. You must be a district resident and are required to preface your comments by an announcement of your name, address, and group affiliation if applicable. All the comments are limited to a total of three minutes in length per individual. When your time is up, I will remind you that your time is over and you should conclude your remarks. Participants must direct all comments to the, not to the staff or other participants. No person may address or question Board members individually. Please note that certain subjects are not appropriate for public comment. Comments staff are personally directed abusive, obscene, irrelevant, or otherwise inappropriate are not permitted. If you make such comments, I will interrupt you and admonish you to refrain from doing so. If you persist on doing so, I will advise you that your time is over and you will not be permitted to offer any further comments. All participants are encouraged to ensure that all information offered is truthful and honest. False statements or statementizing charges may subject the individual making such statements to legal repercussions, including but not limited to defamation claims. In addition, please note that our Board has adopted certain policies regarding district management and the roles of force and as administration play in managing the district. Therefore, please understand that you may be referred to other district officials to defer it from your comments that you have not brought your concern to the attention of the right district personnel so that you can receive the assistance you need. Finally, remember that I will be managing this public comment portion of our meeting so that we can meet the objectives I have mentioned in this introduction. We got a lot of people in the room, we did have six people sign up. If I read you and you might not have wanted to speak, just say that I was, you were just trying to take attendance. If you want to speak, fantastic. And then remember, people that haven't been here before, it's not, we can't, we're not allowed to back and forth. So we'll just kind of listen to what you have to say, we'll take that into advisement for future discussions and things like that. But it's not like a question and answer back and forth. So the first person we have signed up is Catherine Prahoda, maybe?
Yes.
Okay.
Catherine Prahoda, two oh six Bus Avenue number three here in Toma. I am one of the middle school band teachers in the district. And I'm going to cut right to the chase, the Toma Band Department needs an additional full-time band teacher in order to properly service the Toma Band students and give them the rich musical education they deserve. We have proposed this position for the last two years and both times it was not approved. Now, I assure you, we have gone through all the proper channels and followed the chain of command every time we have proposed this position. I'm simply here to keep you informed of the state for Band Department tonight. When I was hired to teach middle school band in Toma eleven years ago, I was the only TMS band teacher responsible for teaching sixth, seventh, and eighth grade bands, TMS marching band, TMS jazz band, and solo ensemble. The high school band teacher, Charles Orion, taught concert band, wind ensemble, marching band, two high school jazz bands, showband, and pep unit. In order to alleviate burnout at the high school, I also covered some high school pep band and directed the pit orchestra at the high school musical. Since the fall of two thousand and fifteen, enrollment in the Toma Band program has exploded. Our TMS marching band is now around one hundred and seventy-five students. There are two TMS jazz bands that serves almost one hundred students. Band classes have between eighty-five and a hundred and five students in each grade level band, and a record number of students want to participate in solo ensemble. To better service the growing number of students involved in band, the district has to twice order additional lockers for the TMS band room. We have purchased more school and instruments for students to utilize. We have split band classes in multiple sections to accommodate the constraints of the band room. We have added additional teaching staff to help teach beginning band lessons and marching band camp, and so much more. While we greatly appreciate everything the Toma Area School District has done to provide for the Toma Band program, we are at a impasse. There is an enormous amount of students that deserve a rich musical education, but three band staff members is no longer enough to support the opportunities that we offer. One example is the lack of the TMS jazz band this year. In order to stay mentally and physically well and give my best teaching every day, I stepped down from the TMS jazz band position. None of the other TASD band teachers have time in their schedule to direct to two TMS jazz bands, and none has applied for positions, so one hundred TMS band students are unfortunately left without a group that they desperately want to be part of. This is just the tip of the iceberg. If high participation in band continues and we do not receive additional staff, the band department will need to seriously look at restructuring curriculum and reevaluate opportunities such as marching band, jazz band, and solo ensemble so students can continue their high levels of excellence without fear of burnout. The district's mission is high-quality student learning every child, every day. Even though we're trying our best, we are still falling short due to resources that we are given or lack thereof. This is now our third time proposing this additional band position. I encourage you to give this much thought, ask many questions, and visit the band room to see our concerns in person. Thank you for your consideration, and please don't hesitate to contact me with further questions.
Thank you. Okay, next person signed up is Jen Schroffnagle?
Good afternoon. So, Jen Schroffnagle, ten ten Berry Avenue, apartment three oh three. So, good evening, my name is Jen Schroffnagle, and I'm one of the band teachers in the district. I am here to talk about the lack of interventions and the effects they have caused the band program. So right now, the sixth grade band students are the only students at TMS to receive regular small group lessons with four to six students per lesson. This allows us to check their progress and help students with their instruments and teach instrument-specific content. The seventh and the eighth grade students are only able to be pulled in once per quarter during their flex time. That's assuming all students per section can be pulled in, which hasn't happened yet this school year. We have narrowed down our sixteen lesson curriculum into four lessons spread out throughout the year. This is a significant decrease in interventions due to the TMS building schedule and our teaching loans. As the traveling band teacher, I am starting to see the effects of irregular interventions of TMS at the high school. So the incoming freshmen need a lot more help than they have in years past. Topics we were able to cover in regular intervention times were not able to be covered anymore due to irregular interventions and our teaching schedules. Katie is prioritizing the sixth grade band students that have very limited time to offer while I am at TMS. At the high school, I am only able to offer interventions in the afternoon, which does not coincide a lot with the student schedules. Alex and I try to offer as many lessons as possible, but the needs of the students outweigh how many lessons we are able to offer. In order to meet the needs of all students at THS and make up for the time lost at TMS, we need more intervention availability. And on a personal note, I feel guilty when I choose one school over the other because I know how much both Alex and Katie need assistance. I wish I didn't have to choose a school and that both schools could receive the supports they desperately need. This is why I urge you to consider hiring a fourth band director for the two thousand and twenty-six, two thousand and twenty-seven school year and beyond. Instead of choosing which school, we can always choose student success and fulfill our mission, high-quality student learning, every child, every day. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Alright, continuing with the trend, we have, next we have Alex Knepker.
Hello, everyone. Good to see you all again, my name is Alex Knepker, I teach band at Toma High School. I live at four oh one Batson Avenue here in Toma. As you've heard both of my colleagues states tonight, the number of participating students in our instrumental music program in this school district is very large, and it continues to grow. I know I speak for all three of us when I say the current state of our Toma Band program is one of the proudest accomplishments of our professional lives. You're going to be hard pressed to find a school district of our size that has this many students participating in band, we're very proud of that. I believe in the amazing benefits that playing music brings to our lives. While we don't expect our students to become professional musicians, we do know that the experiences we work hard to provide them with are forever remembered as some of their favorite parts of high school and even favorite moments of their lives in general. I believe in what music can do for our students. As a student myself here in the Toma Area School District just ten years ago, I can personally opt for this statement. This is the place where my love of music was fostered, grown, and where I was inspired to carry on music myself as a band director, and now I'm honored to carry on that legacy here as a faculty member. I'm here today to ask the Board of Education to very seriously consider the dire needs we have in our band program. You all have heard me speak here at board meetings before, highlighting the exciting opportunities we have for our students. But it is important for me to tell you and to note that with our increased enrollment in high school band, which we're so proud of, I simply need help. Jen, who works at both TMS and THS, is only one person, but the student needs in both buildings require two people. She is often more needed at TMS because of the age of those students, frequently leaving me advantage a little over a hundred and thirty high schoolers by myself. And while I can confidently say that I teach them the brightest and best students in our school, still the ratio of one thirty to one is quite extensive. On a personal note, I can tell you my own physical health has suffered several times through the past school years because of the lengthy amount of time that I need to put in preparing for events outside of school ensembles, such as the pep band you might hear at game, or our high school jazz bands, or working with students after school that need individual help. While I very much enjoy these things, this is one of those moments that would qualify as too much of a very good thing when I start to feel ill. At the, at the high school, students are learning more advanced techniques on their instruments, and time with like-instrument players is desperately needed, which we don't have, as Jen was discussing. We reached the point where I'm not able to keep up with the demand to help students with what they need. I have to turn students away that want to sit down with me and help and get help simply because I've run out of hours in the day, I need to get home. I share in the need for additional staffing at the high school level, similar to what Ms. Prahoda mentioned regarding the need for middle school assistance. So I sincerely thank the Board of Education and our upper-level administrative team for all they have done in the past to support us in our endeavors. I know and appreciate all that has been done for us, and I know that it's not the norm. I kindly ask the Board to help us continue our great success as a band department through the addition of a band faculty member for next school year and beyond. We understand that it is our task to keep the band numbers where they are to justify this faculty member. The investment here will be one that is fruitful and sustainable for many years. I have a copy of the proposal and information, if any Board member would like to see it, please see me after the meeting, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next we have Ryan Defreitas.
Alright, good evening. My name is Ryan Defreitas, I live in four twenty-one North Street here in Toma, and my affiliation tonight is as a band parent. So there we go. Alright, well, good evening, members of the Toma Area School District, Board of Education, superintendent staff, students, and all the community members tonight, that's, that's awesome. A few months ago, I spoke about the incredible work of our middle school band director, Ms. Prahoda, managing a hundred and thirty students solo. She got their instruments, marched to the high school, somehow led a practice session, performed alongside the high school band, and returned all students safely back to the middle school. That night showcased powerful mentorship between our middle and high school programs. As a volunteer that night, I cannot fathom how one person handled the logistics for just that single event, let alone the countless rehearsal hours that were behind it. I'm on the two entire band staffs for them, they're probably because they can't do it themselves. So, our band directors dedication runs deep. They come to the school early and often stay well into the night attending events that drive visibility of our musical arts across all of Wisconsin. I want to highlight some of the dedication that all three of our band directors have shown in this district. We have our high school band director, Mr. Alex Knepker, who spends his summers traveling across Wisconsin as the stage band director for kids from Wisconsin. A highly acclaimed Broadway-style show, featuring top young talent statewide. When I attended their performance here at Toma High School last year, it was an amazing display of musical prowess. Mr. Knepker is elevating our district's fame throughout the entire state. His leadership brings statewide visibility and pride to the Toma Area Schools, setting a high standard for musical arts. Ms. S has served her second year as the Cranjan Show Choir Judge. She presented at Wisconsin Concert Band Association Conferences here in the state. She plays in pit orchestras in the area, and she performs with the La Crosse Wind Symphony and La Crosse Concert Band. Both she and Ms. Prahoda play in the Westby City Band. Ms. Prahoda also serves as Wisconsin Concert Band Association President, has been appointed to the American School Band Directors Association Wisconsin State Standard Provision Committee as State Chair, and sits in the Board for National Association for Music Education. All three band directors share the prestigious title of two thousand and twenty-four Educator of the Year from the Toma Chamber of Commerce. In two thousand and twenty-four alone, they inspire for three hundred and fifty-eight students between the middle and high schools. These band directors here today, these red-hot sparks of passion, we talked about sparks, are among the school's greatest assets. Yet, we rest sniffing them out by taking advantage of their love for teaching and turning it into a budget-saving opportunity. We cannot do business like this. We are preying on the passion as a cost-statings initiative as an injustice that threatens to drive away this irreplaceable talent. Our additional band staff members shows that we as a district support this amazing program and the staff that run it. This is an amazing problem to have. We have a thriving, growing program with statewide recognition and nationwide impact. Claiming a lack of funding is simply not an acceptable answer. It signals fiscal irresponsibility and demands that we step back to seriously reevaluate and reprioritize how we allocate our taxpayer dollars. We use this formula that measures tiny community pressure to assess what we pay for extracurricular activities. With all the accolades I've highlighted, and I've left many out, I dare say we have failed to successfully assess the immense community pressure and value in our musical programs. With all the passion, experience, and commitment to music in this room today, it would be unwise to take any proposal affecting these programs lightly. Our band directors stand on the verge of burnout, yet they still must have the energy tonight to fight for these children and their futures. This is a well-justified plea for help that cannot fall without ears tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next we have Joanna Straker.
Hello, my name is Joanna Straker, two hundred and six Elizabeth Street in Toma. I know you've heard a bunch from the past ten minutes about the band, and I'm going to talk about the band, but I think it's important to hear from a student. So when I heard that the band directors were talking at this meeting, I thought I would give my two cents as well. So, filling out the district's community survey as a part of the superintendent search made me think about our school district's strengths and weaknesses. I think one of the biggest, our biggest strength is the performing arts. We have amazing choir, show choir, theater, and of course, band programs. Last school year, after someone saw the band's performance at Disney Springs, they invited us to march at the Minnesota State Fair. We also recently found that we were invited to perform at the Wisconsin State Capitol in March as part of Music in Our Schools Month. These honors are a testament to the amazing band program we have in the Toma Area School District. More personally, I myself have benefited from many opportunities, including statewide honor bands, state-level solo and ensemble performances, and performances of extracurricular groups such as jazz band. I'm eternally grateful for all that I've been able to achieve during my time at the Toma Bands. Unfortunately, the future band students at THS will not see this level of success without the proper support at the middle school level, which is currently overwhelmed with high enrollment and not enough personnel. This has been a recurring issue for many years, and it's time it's finally addressed. The middle school students are not able to participate in jazz band, and their participation in solo and ensemble is limited more each year due to a lack of support. When I say support, I'm not referring to community support from parents and student volunteers. Band students and parents have always stepped up to help at band camps and performances, especially in recent years as the need for volunteers has increased. When I say support, I'm referring to a qualified music educator. The fact that middle school has had, has had to hire a solo and ensemble coach is proof of this. The Wisconsin State Standard of Music Education emphasizes the importance of small group and solo performance, and solo and ensemble is the only way middle schoolers can access this part of the music education. While it is amazing that we are able to hire a solo and ensemble coach for this year, this is only putting a band name, literally, on a much more serious problem. A coach for solo and ensemble cannot provide instruction on the flute, clarinet, saxophone, oboe, trumpet, French horn, euphonium, trombone, tuba, and a dozen percussion instruments. Only one type of person can do that, a band director. If an additional band director is not hired, the district is failing their students and the directors who work hard every day to provide the best band education possible. Students in the community are investing more and more into the band program each year, and it is now time that the district invests another amount. Thank you.
Thank you very much, especially as a student, thank you for coming and talking, you're a very good speaker, thank you for standing up. Uh, next we have Dr. Kelly Heisman Klein.
Kelly Heisman Klein, one seven eight seven nine, interior of town of Toma. I'm a former band mom, I continue to volunteer for the band, so I may not have skin in the game right now, but our community does, and I really feel like we're at a tipping point. I talked to you back May, last May, about the importance of hiring another director. But we truly are at a tipping point where we've started to affect their education, I think. Ms. Schroffnagle will really attest to that. I did a little research today looking at different teacher professional organizations. This piece is about to effectively teach ensemble groups, is about fifty students to one. At the high school, we're at eighty-seven to one. We're pushing a hundred and sixteen to one at the middle school. That's a great problem to have, but we're starting to see the effects of it. You talk about intervention with the band lessons, where you went from sixteen band lessons to four in a year. We're failing our students. That would be like saying, I'm struggling in math, but I can't go to Timber Wolf Time because the teacher doesn't have time for me. I can't get help in chemistry because the teacher doesn't have time for me. Would that be acceptable in any other curriculum? No, and if you only use other terms that, our, our education terms is not just intervention. These are the, this is where you start to get some formative assessments for students. You can identify their strengths, identify their weaknesses. A lot of people don't realize that the middle school level, teaching band is like teaching a foreign language but also teaching you how to change your carburetor at the same time. You can't do it by crowdsourcing, and hiring coaches is crowdsourcing lower-level levels of expertise. But let me tell you a little bit more about the importance of these lessons. This is where they form long-term relationships with these teachers. Both my daughters are already out of high school. One is finishing college, one is halfway through right now. They had such a, a robust experience with band and mentorship with these teachers that they both had a band teacher write them a letter of recommendation for college. And when they were interviewed for college for different organizations, they were asked about, tell me about your soccer experience, or tell me about your chemistry class. It was tell me about your music experiences. And I had a similar experience when I was in, in college. When you're applying for scholarships, you're applying for leadership positions, they want to know about your music experience more than anything. My oldest daughter is going to be applying to medical school next year, and I know the questions they're going to ask because they're kind of universal across the board. Talk about collaboration, talk about teamwork, talk about leadership. And I know for a fact she's going to hark back to some of her music experiences. We're at a tipping point, like I said, and I want to use the cautionary tale of the Syracuse public school system, and what happens when we don't invest in band. My husband and I went to the same high school, he was a senior, I was a freshman. One year ahead of him is his really good friend John Catherine. He was our premier trumpet player, he played in the pit band, he was the soloist for solo and ensemble, he was the soloist in jazz band. He lives in Syracuse, right behind Syracuse University, his kids go to the public school system. He wanted nothing more than his kids to be in band, but that district did not invest, invest in the band program, and it collapsed at the middle school level. Their high school is two to three times, almost three times as big as Toma. They have maybe a dozen band, band musicians in. That's what happens when you don't invest in the program, you burn out teachers. It starts at the lower level, you have musicians that, that tune out, aren't interested, and by the time you have high school level, you don't have anybody in the program. I implore you to consider hiring a new band teacher. Band is our shining jewel of our district, it's what we stand out in the state. And it's not just music, it provides so many other experiences for these students. So I seriously implore you to, to hire another teacher, thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. That will wrap up our public comments for tonight. Thank you all for coming to that. Alright, uh, next we'll learn reports and recognition of staff and students. And under that, we have Ms. Rudy Joyce, who is our THS student representative to the Board of Education.
Okay, so the first semester just ended with our grades finality today, and then our school food pantry that we started to do that the government shut down has not been really good, better than we expected. So we're continuing to keep it up, it's helping many students out of our school. They just, we leave it open, they can ask a teacher to go out, teach a lesson, go out. Grab a bag, you can grab whatever you need. And then different clubs, some people, parents, just bring food donations, or I know clubs I'm in, they set a budget and then they'll give it to buy food for the school pantry. And then DECA's competition season continues to go well as the academic decathlon. We were just in the O'Clair Math Competition doing very well as well. And then a new thing that we're starting this year, it is a winter dance. This is our first year doing it, but it's coming up, and it's going to be happening on the regular basis.
Cool.
Very good, thank you for that update. And next, under that, we have the Toma Elementary School's fifth grade students with their regional math knowledge competition.
Alright, I'm representing them, I invited them, but they're a little bit too scared, and it's probably their bedtime, so. I will, I will represent them, I'm proud to hear of them. Good evening, tonight I have the pleasure of recognizing an outstanding group of fifth grade students who represented our district in the regional math knowledge competition. Earlier this year, all fifth grade students across the district participated in a rigorous math assessment. Students were given thirty minutes to demonstrate their math knowledge, problem-solving skills, and perseverance. From that large pool of students, the twelve highest scoring students were selected to represent Toma at the regional level. That's an impressive accomplishment in itself. Tonight, I would like to recognize those students by name. Ethan Kanisch, Amelia Forrest, Colin Seibert, Naomi Walker, Dylan Hendricks, Mason Rude, Callan Frank, Adella Baumann, Gavin Schmitz, Lucas Gunn, Kiera Chapman, and Maggie Cardiff. These students competed against peers from across the region and did an outstanding job representing Toma. We're especially proud to share their competition results. In the individual competition, Ethan Kanisch perceived first place. In the team competition, In the team competition, students worked in groups of four with others from Toma that they just met that day. We received second place with Amelia, Ethan, Maddie, and Colin. And we also received first place with Naomi, Dylan, Callan, and Mason. These results speak not only to students' math skills, but also to their ability to work cooperatively, think critically under pressure, and rise to the challenge. I want to congratulate these students, thank our teachers for their strong instruction and support, and thank families for encouraging and supporting their children. Thank you.
All right, uh, next, we have the Toma High School DECA program, students and advisors recognition for their national membership campaign and five-level campaign campaigns.
Okay, thank you for having.
You're good.
Thank you for having me here tonight. DECA's had another good year. We've had a lot of success. And when you invited me here for this meeting, we were coming here to celebrate our Thrive Membership Campaign, which our DECA membership, including professionals, alumni, and of course, our student body topped out at a hundred and nine members this year. Eighty-seven of those being our student members, the rest being alumni and professional members. Uh, we also achieved, that, that we achieved at the Thrive Membership level for DECA. Uh, and then we also were awarded an Achieve Level Membership for our, our chapter campaigns and community and school involvement. Several of the things DECA has done this year, we raised food for the food pantries, including the high school food pantry. Uh, we raised money for these families with our annual penny presents drive. So we've done a lot of different community service types of things within the community. Um, and since then, we've had quite the competition success. Uh, our two girls that are running our school-based enterprise in my advanced marketing class have submitted their paper for gold level recognition at National DECA, and they have qualified to attend ICDC in Atlanta, Georgia. We asked permission for that back in June, so, uh, we've had a good one for a number of years, so we, we're playing ahead. Um, and that is Carol Lee Nelson, Alyssa Krings. They cannot be here tonight. Uh, they've also expanded on with the help of Brad Pluter, the Rollaway School Store, which we have all the product for, ready to roll it out. We're still waiting for a point-of-sale system to bring that to our basketball games. So as soon as we get everything set up, hopefully, we'll have it all yet this year. Uh, but we're running dangerously short on packed gym nights and other games. Uh, and then we had our district competition where Tom High School sent twenty-two kids up to Monomino, Wisconsin, two weeks ago uh, for competition, and I have a number of our winners today with me. We have Kush Patel, our junior, who is our, was champion in personal finance. Andrew Lindberg and Tanner Gross received second place in team financial service decision-making. David Shane Hopper, who can't be here tonight, uh, received second place in principles of finance. Overall, Toma received sixteen medals, and eighteen of our twenty-two students qualified to go to state at the end of February. So they did an outstanding job there. Those students will be able to take their projects, which we have eleven students competing in projects this year, uh, to state in Lake Geneva, Wisconsin, February twenty-second through twenty-fifth. Up next for our, for our chapters, our general membership will be the polar plunge, so I expect we have a high number of students wanting to participate in that this year. So hopefully, we'll be asked to donate money to help Special Olympics and yet let, allow some of our seniors and juniors to actually go over and rip the Chilwell Waters Black River Cross. Or we'd be happy to have you join our team, okay? And, uh, just join us.
When did you say that once though?
March seventh.
March seventh.
Okay, Todd, you said you weren't. No. Um, so and then, um, also recognition at the same time, I brought one of my business students with us today also, Morgan Swenson, who in a separate contest run by the Monroe County Land Conservation was actually awarded for one of the publicity pieces she did. She designed a poster that won their contest, and she will be recognized at an upcoming event of the Monroe County Land Conservation. We'd like to thank you for the support you've given us over the years, for the support, for that continued support. And if you'd like to talk to any of the individuals I brought with me today, I do have Morgan Swenson, Kush Patel, Andrew Lindberg, Tanner Gross, and of course, my partner in crime here, Ms. Tatiana Johnson-Briggs, so.
Yeah, do you think you want to? Do you think you want to summarize maybe what you did?
Yeah. First of all, thank you for giving the opportunity to speak tonight. As Mr. Briggs said, I was a champion in my category of personal finance. And basically, what I do in personal finance is, you know, under question test. And then we go to the rule plays. This year, my true role plays were different kind of investing, usual bonds, stocks, bonds. How does age influence what kind of investment to make? And my second role play was on taxes, like ten ninety-nine, ten ninety-eight, W-2, W-4. And then I look forward to going to state, where me and a lot of my partners, we're going to, I present, going to make our project, a franchisee where next year, commence a judge on investing in our company or, or a franchise that is like the tree scooters popping, and we have to tell them what's the cost going to be, what's the type of marketing that you're going to do, how is our location going to influence the type of customers that we get, the initial start costs, and much other information that's needed to open a franchisee.
Sounds like you understand all that better than I do. Good. Thank you. Thank you.
So I'll talk a little bit about the event that I competed at districts. It was financial services, team decision-making. And so me and Tanner worked as a team for this, very similar to Kush's event. And, but this time, we were given thirty minutes to prep for our role plays and ten minutes to present to a judge. So we were given two cases. One was about economics and one was us acting as financial analysts for a small business owner. And we would advise them on what kind of stuff they would take. And very similar to Kush, we also take a hundred-question test at its time. And, um, at state, I'll also be competing with Tanner in a project, and I'll let him tell you a little bit more about the project that we're.
So yeah, we're running a project called, or we already ran a project called Chain for Cheer. Ran it through the November twenty-fourth through December fifth. Uh, we put job, money jars in English classrooms and encouraged students to donate, and the money would be going to families in need that can't provide presents for their kids or families in need in general.
Cool.
One little side note, that's Kush and say about himself, and then one of my members, Alyssa Krings, who did not be here tonight. They are both running for a state officer this year through the Wisconsin DECA program. So if they're able to go through that, it'd be representing at the state level, I'm very proud of them.
Thanks, Mr. Briggs, and all you guys for coming. Yeah, yeah. And I think for Mr. Briggs or? She's, she's kind of being shy. Step up. There you go. Give her a little encouragement.
Um, so the theme for the poster we drew was Soil Where All Begins. So I did, I drew, um, a person holding a flower pot and had the soil underneath and kind of a polluted city above. It kind of represents that no matter how much we humans destroy the land, soil will always be there and thriving.
Sounds cool. That wasn't that difficult. We don't write that too often.
She's selling herself short. The contest also required the students to hand draw everything this year. There was not a lot of computer-generated images at all. So, which was quite the task for a lot of our business students. But they did a extremely good job.
Would it be on display at some point, someplace at high school or at major?
Uh, if, if it advances smart enough, they're actually going to make it in posters and use that.
And then be, yeah, distributed, kind of, cool.
Yes. Uh, we don't have, currently have access to the poster. It's at the Monroe County, uh, Land Conservation Society, so.
Awesome. Thank you all for coming. That's awesome. Okay, um, on your agenda, we got to move something up because we have the raw line, right? Okay, so if you go down under B, all the way down under five, so Roman numeral B, uh, A, we're going to move that up right now. So we're going to look at the presentation of information by April L. Anderson from CLA and our district's independent auditors report and financial statements dated June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, and consideration approval of the auditors' report we will see. That's why we all have the binder here.
April, are you able to hear anything?
Yeah, we got to get her though. It's just coming through weird.
Want to try what we're trying to talk?
Yes.
Yeah, now we're good, yeah.
Okay. Michelle, would you ask anything before I jump into it or?
Just that these, the, what she's going to be going through is the summary, and I have B pointing that up there. She talks, it's also embedded for board members on the topic. You have the entire binder, um, at your disposal, and it's also embedded for the public to say they want to look at that. This is the first year that we have, um, had Lieutenant Larson as our auditors. About this time, maybe two months last year, we were afraid we were going to find somebody. Um, but reaching out to them, they, um, have the fantastic, very, very thorough job, and she'll share all that with you now.
Thank you, Michelle. Yeah, so, um, was introduced, I'm April Anderson, the principal for the engagement team, who's on the engagement team that covers your audit. And so you have the full seventy, almost seventy, data reports of a lot of useful information in there, but we like to pull up key pieces of information in this couple-page summary that I'll be going over this evening. Um, and, and I'm actually not going to hit on every single line I know, but just pull up some of the key pieces of information that we do love to share in these communications and presentations that the boards. So, um, I remember watching the auditors' reports with the opinion, uh, your financial statements for the year was an unlatified opinion. And so that is the highest opinion that you can receive when considered a clean opinion. So that means that your financial statements are in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles and the governmental accounting standards that you have to follow at the governmental entity. So that's obviously what you're striving for, and, um, you know, I have to ask to Michelle and her team and the district overall for, uh, the work that they do in complying with, with all the accounting standards and rules and regulations there. Also, under item number one, we see the management letter section. And what this is, is as we go through the audit, we are required to communicate to you any internal control, um, issues that we note. And here you'll see that we, with issues of deficiency for what's called limited segregation of duties. And so with internal control findings, um, there's called material weaknesses, which is the most severe type of hiding. And then there's significant deficiency, which is a setback. It's considered less severe, but it's still something that we wanted to communicate. Um, and overall, for limited segregation of duty, what that means is that in the different processes, um, receiving, disbursements, payroll, journal entries, one person shouldn't have access to different parts of that process, so they shouldn't be initiating it, reconciling it, and reporting on it. Um, and overall, the, the district has some really good processes in place, some really good controls, approvals, reviews, and that sort of thing in place. Um, but we did know that just in the journal entry process, we would, um, you know, suggest taking that up a little bit with a little bit more review and approval there. So, um, but otherwise, everything looked good and didn't have any other issues to report. And, um, generally with the districts that we work with, we report limited segregation of duties as a material weakness just due to disparity of it. And, you know, one person or just a few people having access to the different parts of the process. So again, overall, your district, um, is set up very good well, and you do have some good processes and controls in place.
April, can you share, um, what's ways to fix that deficiency?
Um, and that would be, you know, it might not be feasible to take away the access of, you know, any making journal entries or that sort of thing, just making sure then that there's a review of that. Um, and so, and, and I review, there has to be kind of evidence and a sign up on it. Um, so things like that is, is what we do look for a little bit more, um, on every single journal entry that would be made. But as I said, otherwise, you know, it's up the internal process. It can be, um, disbursement process and review process. Things looked good, so. So as I said, item number one, it's just overall results for the audit. And so we go, go into item number two, which, uh, is the financial results for your general fund, for fund ten. And here you'll see that we do like to pull a few years' worth of information just to kind of see if there's any trends that we want to key in on, um, and note in, you know, in our, our item. Um, and so that's what, what you see here is all that for new information. So we start off with the balance sheet, which is your assets at the top there, then your liabilities, and the net of your asset plus your liabilities is that fund balance section. And I won't hit on every line here, but just key in a, a couple, um, pieces of information. So first of all, with your balance sheet that you're looking at, and these assets and liabilities, sometimes changes from year to year are simply timing differences, that one thing might be paid versus one day might have been received one year versus the next year. Um, and so what I go to key in on here is actually in the liability section, there's the top line, that's a short-term yield payable. And so there, I just wanted to actually note that you did count a balance at, at year-end. Um, and so over years, over the years, school districts generally have kind of a cash flow issue at the end of the year because you're ready for maybe some, um, grants to come in after your asset of sale and then your final tax settlement, uh, from accounting in August. And so, um, you obviously have a good cash flow level at the end of the year that you didn't have to borrow that short-term, uh, cash flow borrowing. Uh, you did borrow seven hundred and sixty thousand dollars throughout the year on a loan with credit and paid that back as well, which you can use that funding at the end of the year. So your cash flow was, was a positive result there, um, the last four years that you've been there. You got to have to borrow on that. So what we do look to key in on here in your balance sheet is really that fund balance section, the net of your assets plus your liabilities, um, because that is considered what is truly kind of available for continued operations into the future, is that fund balance. And so as we look at that, you'll see that your fund balance, um, your overall fund balance did not change from twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-five. Um, what happened there, you truly did actually have a lot of six hundred and sixty thousand dollar increase in fund balance, or your revenues exceeded your expectations for the year. However, you made an advantageous transfer of that excess to your one forty-six capital improvements fund. Um, because I think you move it over there, you can, um, boost some aid on that, and then you can use it in the future for those capital improvements that you want. So even though you could see that it was going to really change, you did have a positive result there for the year, but that funding over to that other fund. When we do look at that fund balance, it, you will see it's broken down into three different categories for you. So the overall fund balance is at that eight point three million. And you have two hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars at the end of twenty twenty-five, which is considered non-spendable. And so that is funding that is up in your assets, like prepaying inventories that aren't really in a spendable form. Maybe they're already been spent, that cash has gone out, and it'll just be expense in the future, um, or it's not readily available, spendable form. So you kind of take that out because it's not truly available to spend. Then there's restricted fund balance of a hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars that you had at the end of twenty twenty-five. And restricted is where it's in your fund balance, but it is set aside for a particular purpose by an external source. And so, uh, this one hundred and eighty thousand, eighty-eight thousand dollars that you have in that form of fund balance relates to yourself insurance and some grant funding that you receive, but that can't be used for just any particular purpose. It has to be used for those specific fund, funding sources. So then you'll see the highlighted line, the unassigned fund balance of seven point nine million, and that's what is. And that's what is truly considered available to be used into the future for your future operations. And so you'll see that that is relatively stable for the last, uh, couple of years. And, um, what we look at there is taking that unassigned fund balance compared to your annual expenditures, the next highlighted line. And then we get down to that percentage at the very bottom of this page, where you'll see that that's at nineteen point eight percent. And it was the same last year, uh, the couple of years before that, it was a little bit higher at twenty-two percent. Um, and what, what we see here, um, is the general industry recommendation is to have that at about twenty-five to thirty-five percent. However, I will say with the school districts that we generally work with, um, they, it is, it does run a little bit lower, about twenty to twenty-five percent. And I do see some down about fifteen percent. But what, what is key here is that you guys are at that level and that seems to be kind of the comfortable level for you guys to, um, operate at and maintain it. So it's not like it's considered going down each year, but it's maintained at that level of around twenty percent. So, um, and again, you, you were able to actually have excess revenues in the current year and you moved that over to front forty-six. So again, you're at a good level there really and maintaining that at that level. Um, so that's what I have of the general funds. I don't know, Michelle, or how you usually do this, if you want to have questions as we go or just continue on.
Okay, if the board has any questions, feel free to just interject them.
Okay. If not, then we can move on to item number three, which is just the ending fund basis for all your funds, the number of the district. So you'll see that that general fund was pulled through, uh, from the first page. And then here you have, um, some debt service funding that appeared over from previous years , um, to be used in the future for particularly debt service, um, needs. Then that capital improvements fund, that is the one I really wanted to key in on here in this section because I had mentioned it in the general fund discussion. And so you really built that up over the last four years as far as, um, being able to move funding over there. Um, and as, as I said, advantageous for shared revenue, um, calculations. And then you have that funding sitting, sitting aside there to be used for those future capital improvements needed for the district. So, um, positive there to be able to build that up as you have that. So overall then, um, you know, that your overall fund balance for all the governmental funds has truly increased over the, uh, since from twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-five, uh, from that fourteen point six million to the fifteen point six million. The next section that you see there, item number four, is business-type funds. And what you see here is your food service fund, and that is reported a little bit differently than your other funds. And so here it's called net position, kind of similar to the fund balance concept. And you'll see that that has decreased over the last couple of years, but that's kind of the trend that we've been seeing since, um, COVID funding in, you know, the twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three year timeframe, um, funding reimbursement for food service meals was increased. And so now that, that kind of increased the fund balance in that position during that timeframe. And now it's coming back down to somewhat of a normal level, that should be in at the two hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars. And then the very last sort of fund that is reported in the financial statements is in item number five, the fiduciary fund. And so here you record, uh, your employee benefit trust fund, so fund seventy-three, where you are setting aside, um, some, some funding there for those future COVID-intentioned benefits for your employees. And so you'll see that over the last couple of years, that balance, that, that position balance at the end of the last couple of years has increased a little bit and at the end of twenty twenty-five, it's at one point one million. So those are all your funds that are reported. Um, and there's, there's more detailed information in the financial statements, but these are kind of the key pieces of, of each of that, those activities. And then the last thing that we like to highlight in our summary to the board is item number six, which is just the long-term obligations that the district has outstanding. And here you'll see that, um, you don't carry any general obligation debts, so you haven't for the last few years. Um, and so obviously you can see that, um, the last couple of lines, each school district in the state has a general obligation debt limit, uh, which is half percent of the equalized value. So your limit is two hundred and fifty-seven million, uh, which you, you don't have any outstanding against that. And then the other long-term liabilities that are reported in the financial statements include lease liabilities, so long-term contracts, uh, for the use of, um, assets, it's five hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars. You will see there's complicated expenses, which relates to employee benefits that your employees have earned, such as vacation-type leave, um, to be used and paid out into the future. So that balance you see did increase quite a bit from twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-five. And that is mainly due to the newer accounting standard that was implemented and a different way of calculating what that balance truly is. Um, and so in the past, it was really only calculated based on what would be paid out at like retirement or termination. Um, but the current standards require a calculation for what is, what is truly earned at the end of the year, but to be paid out and used during employment as well. Um, and so that's why that increased because there's kind of two parts for the calculation now. And then the very last item that you see in that long-term obligations, um, section is just your other post-employment benefits, uh, the district's single employer plan that you have for your employees, for post-employment benefits. And that's, um, estimated at about four point one million. Again, you have that trust that you're putting in fund seventy-three, that was on item number five, that does have a balance to help offset those cost, the chaos costs that they can pay up into the future. So that is, as I said, the key pieces of information that we like to share. Um, and overall, you know, you don't have any debt outstanding, so you have capacity there as needed. Um, and the general fund, you have positive results there and were able to loosen up that excess over into your front forty-six. So, um, really positive results overall for twenty twenty-five. Michelle, would you want to?
They're just, they're figuring out if they have any questions for you first.
And I know that there's a lot of information in the, the polls that we came up with. So if you are looking at things later on and have any questions, you can certainly, you know, feel free to, Michelle, or to, you know, Michelle, to, um, get back to, considering if you have questions for me directly.
Thank you very much, April. Have a nice.
Positive.
Thank you, yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
So, um, did I have any questions for her, if you had anything else for Ms. Clark or Dr. Jensen? Otherwise, I would look for approval of that auditor's report that was presented to us. It could be on the front row. motion by Teresa, do you have a second?
All second.
Second, that's Sue, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, and like she said, uh, you can look through this and, um, if you got questions, you can reach out to her or Ms. Clark and go from there. So we'll jump back up to where we were and go to district strategic plan initiatives and student achievement. And under that, we have a presentation of the leadership activities by the Toma High School guiding coalition. How's that about? Five, yep, yep. Most of the rest of the room.
Wow, he's doing that, let me introduce them to all of you. We have Mr. Miller, Chris Schmidt, Mr. Cuzillas, Mr. Dassler, Mr. Lively, Mr. Adams, and Dr. Masbach. Kyle, please, of Toma High School.
Hey, it's working. We're pulling.
Um, thank you again for inviting us. Um, it's really awesome to be here and share what's happening in the high school, um, with our guiding coalition. Our mission is high-quality student learning, every child, every day. Um, our vision is Toma High School will become a state academic school of choice where all students learn in high levels. The teachers on the guiding coalition, um, Bailey Height and myself, Carolyn Johnson, Teddy Schultz, Tina Geneva Co., Anna Ryman, and Scott Conti, yes. Coaches include Jamie Schmitz and Rachel Bernstein. Uh, our administrators are Jai V, Jeff Adams, and Jayden Nussbaum. Um, I wanna skip the we wills, it's gonna save us probably about thirty seconds. And you can thank us, we just narrowed this down from eleven seconds just for you. Um, we're here to create a positive professional culture by focusing on students, uh, students and staff's social, emotional, and educational needs. Two, contribute to, contribute, the contributing members of a collaborative team working through the PLC process to promote student growth. Um, three, create and implement a guaranteed viable curriculum across other grade, grade level. Four, develop relevant and culturally responsive lessons to help students make real connections to learning. Commit to lifelong learning, encourage parents to understand that education is an active partnership between the school and its community and, um, recognizing our success as a learning partner. Um, our impact, um, we attend two monthly meetings, um, to discuss staff needs in relation to our building goals around tier-one classroom structure. GC members provide professional development to the staff based on data collection around those goals. So we are, we are helping adult learning happen and we are gathering data to see that it's happening and then assessing what we're doing when we get that data. Um, much like what we wanna be doing in the classroom, we're doing the same exactly with adult behaviors. The THS GC is currently, uh, participating in leadership labs through CISA four. I believe we have four, four-day-long events set up, um, where we're basically reassessing and assessing what we want our goals to be and why we want them to be exactly what they are. School-wide goal, um, this was given to us, um, this was basically, um, this was from Angie, um, down to us. By the end of the twenty twenty-five, twenty-six school year, all collaborative teams at THS will be proficient in anchor statement three. The GC will lead monthly professional development around anchor statement three. Um, if you have any questions about that, you can, I can discuss anchor statement three as well. Um, our school-wide goal two, this was assigned by us, by the end of the twenty twenty-five, twenty-six academic school year, at least sixty percent of students will achieve a score of seventy percent or higher across all of the courses as measured by course rates. In addition, students will show an increase in composite pre-ACT secure and ACT scores by two points. That is, um, if I'm a freshman going out in my sophomore year, we're following them. So we're not taking this year's juniors and comparing them to the last year's juniors. A little bit more on this, on this, um, school-wide goal number one, uh, the first one we mentioned. We are working on adherence and commitment to this anchor statement, one and two, the ones we, we spent the last two years working on, which is the collaborative culture, basically like we saw you do. Our teams are coming in, they're setting up an agenda, when that agenda is set, we're making sure we're going, we're moving quickly and efficiently because we have forty-seven minutes, um, maybe a little bit more of a bucky, but we wanna make sure we have that agenda lined up tight so we know what we're doing. Um, anchor statement two is making sure our curriculum is locked in. This is something that's going to be helping our students and it will help our students. Um, designing a balanced student, uh, system, creating an assessment within, um, our course. We wanna make sure we're using formative and summative tests. Make sure we have a check along the way, check along the way, let's assess, let's see how we're doing. Um, and modifying ourselves and what we're doing and we're making those checks. And to strategically implement those assessments. This year is, uh, focused largely on assessment design, um, using inclusive assessment practices, clarity and reflective, um, reflection of the use of our test. Goal two, action steps, um, I will read that again because we already talked about it. Um, but basically, um, we, what we're trying to do is more of a less this year. What we don't wanna be doing is, here we're doing this, now we need to do this, now we need to do this, now we need to do this. Basically finding one to three high-leverage, um, things that we can do in our school to make sure that if all teachers are doing them, we're getting what we need. What we found at the beginning of the year is that, um, we, we looked at a lot of data points, um, and the two that at least stood out to us were, number one are achievement numbers, and number two were our, our, um, actual, actually were cell phones. Um, so the amount of times a student had been, um, has a referral for using cell phones. And we made a bit of a like cross-reference and started to realize that our kids are engaged. Um, whether on a level they're engaged in their devices and they're unengaged with the academic content. And what we need to do is we need to bring them back, we need to, we need to get that engagement. And so we were thinking about how do we do that? Um, we were basically, there's two things we were looking for. Making sure that we are effectively at the beginning of each class, letting our students know this is exactly what we can learn today by the time we're done. It gives us a little bit of continuity and it makes us understand, hey, I, I can guarantee myself when I'm done with this first class, this is what I should be able to do. And second is something that we started last year that we are doubling down on this year, it's called gradual release of responsibility, which means, um, there's four tiers. I start teaching, um, I start teaching something that needs to be taught. I don't spend an entire classroom teaching what needs to be taught, I teach the skills that are gonna help the students do it themselves. Then, uh, the release comes wherein I look at my students and I say, okay, I want you and you to work together while I move around and make sure I'm clearing up any misconceptions. Heavy on me, it's heavier on me at the beginning, I'm, I'm paying very close attention to what's happening in that classroom. Um, and then we're flipping it, so allowing collaborative teams to work. And what we're, what I'm doing is I'm taking, I'm stepping back a little bit, um, expecting that my team can do it. Once we see the teams are working, then it becomes a you-do, which basically means the student can do it on their own. Um, and that's, that's what we mean by basically the gradual release of responsibility. We're doubling down on it because we believe that if we can get students actively participating in their, um, in their education, we're gonna get some of that, that ownership back. And of course, as always, we are collecting data, we're acting on that data, changing on the fly, changing on the fly, whatever the daily. Um, future action items, uh, continued support of tier-one best practices and, um, instruction. And tier-one, I'm sure you already know this, but it's basically what happens in my classroom. When I teach in a classroom, I'm guaranteeing what's learned from me and what I can see they learn. Tier-two is when I have a student who's just not getting it. And we want that number to be, we want the number of students who have tier-one when I'm done teaching to be at least eighty percent. We want them to be able to, to, I wanna be able to look into my classroom and say, at least eighty percent of my students know what I just taught. And that's on the daily. Um, and that's what we're talking about with tier-one. Tier-two is the next step, tier-three is, um, a little more intensive and, um, intervention necessary. Uh, we wanna continue, um, our work around assessments, um, and we want, uh, we want district-wide learning about assessments. We wanna share what we're doing. I think this year, the other thing that is, that is worth, worth, worth note is I started this last year, I told you. And what I've noticed is that after PLC coverage, we found that, um, what's, what's really important is we, we can no longer be liaisons. Because I saw it at the beginning wherein I would, um, I would go to my English colleagues and I would say, okay, I'm going to a GC meeting and they would say, okay, we need to talk about this, 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 and this. Um, and we realized that we can't be that, we have to be something different. We cannot be a grievance board, we cannot be a, we're not a liaison between teachers and, teachers and administrators. That's what professional conversations are all about. And we need, we realize that we have a job to do and that job is to make sure we can, and we can, we have exemplars and we lead by example and we can drive our school.
I encourage conversations.
He left it all up to his gentlemen to present.
Did you get the straw? That's my question.
He willingly did this. I have been a member of the guiding coalition at the high school for quite a while, um, since I called here in the district. I have moved from a business teacher into an instructional coach role. And I just wanna say like, I'm incredibly proud of the high school guiding coalition and the growth that they themselves have made to be the lead learners and the leaders of the building and step up and really thrive this work and take ownership. And it was seen today in our learning, our meeting.
Any extra questions?
Yeah, actually, I do have a question. Um, when you said.
When you said that you didn't want to be a sounding board for grievances, how did that conversation actually take place within your department?
It looked something like, basically I came, because I'm very clear with my, with my department, I'm incredibly clear. After every meeting, I'm telling them exactly what we're talking about, we're very transparent. Well, I try to be it, but I think we all try to be, basically this is what's happening. And this year, it was as simple as, I'm bringing this to the board, are you going to table it? And we tabled it. And I brought this back to English teachers and I said, it's been tabled. But I do encourage you to talk with Jai or Jamie and have a conversation with them. We don't have the time for this right now, but you are encouraged to talk with the people, you need to talk about it.
Do you feel any pushback within your department or anything like that?
I don't personally, I don't personally.
Anybody else, any anecdote?
As a coach, I sometimes feel like I am a sounding board and I just push back and say, what's in your realm of control? What solutions can you bring forward? And let's work on this together. And it's received with a positive feedback, like their voice has been heard, but now I can bring solutions forward.
I'm glad you did that because I know in each of these presentations, it's all been very positive. Somewhere in there, you know, what I was hearing was, I liked that a lot better. You have those things within because you think we're going to sit here and say, everything's just going, okay, I don't, we're talking with people.
Change is hard for anyone. And, and to be honest, the former system was comfortable. People were left in their rooms, they were their own autonomous decision-maker, and they didn't have to be held accountable to whether or not students were learning. One of the, one of the missions, goals of this district is to hire and retain high-quality staff. I have had the pleasure of working with student teachers, many student teachers over the years, and, and I don't give them a choice. Like they're part of this process, because they're teaching classes, you're, you're in conversations. When they leave, they all, they totally, I, I don't want to work for a district that doesn't have a PLC process. You are removing learning by lottery, right? There are great teachers everywhere and there are teachers that are learning. You create a PLC process like we're going through, there are going to be resistors that, it doesn't matter. It's a corporate structure or a government structure like ours. There are going to be people that are going to resist that process because it's uncomfortable to change. And, and the learning by lottery system is done because you're brought into a collaborative team, you talk about best practice, and you have choice in that, you do. But you have to have professional conversations, you have to direct what is best for students. Not, I like teaching this, that's great, you can still teach that, but within the confines of what is best for student growth and learning. History background and civics background, really easy for me to create a test that no one in this room tests. Really, really hard. Doesn't mean anyone's learned anything, right? And so that, that's, that's what I grew up with, so we all grew up with it. Here's this random question about World War II, you didn't get your mom, so you get me today, right? What we're doing now is skill-based, like they have skills to go into the community. And, and so yes, it's not easy work. There have been times where we've been done with our meetings, our training, and it's like, I am gone, exhausted. And then we go back and we have to tell that to them, like, no, we're, we are focused on student learning and adult learning. We are no longer the disseminator of email information.
I love, I think that's, that, the culture, that's, you hit it, it's the culture, that's the paradigm shift.
And the really good thing about this is that Jamie, Jeff, and I are part of the team. We want to make sure that they know that we are a part of the team, we are not the leaders of the team. And so that we can have an honest conversation, not pushing each other backward, not need to, to make sure that we do that stuff for students and for teachers. Now, really about our agenda is about the team. And so this year, I've seen so much growth from the beginning to now. The courage and empowerment of the work is transcendent. I really do appreciate the team.
Okay, so I'm going to take a step backwards. You had, Mr. Mill, you alluded to anchor statement number three. Exactly where was that in that presentation, or was it something I should have known?
Anchor statement three, it, it's funny because we should know it, but I don't know who knows it, like, like who knows it. But basically, anchor statement three is...
I know. So anchor statement three is around the PLC questions. It's around assessment, but it's around PLC question number two.
Okay, what is that?
Really getting at, what do we want students to know, and how are we going to know when they know it? And we'll move into then, anchor statement number four, which is coming next year, which is around, what do we do when they don't know it? And what do we do when they do know it, know it? So intervention and enrichment. And it's really hard to do assessment without talking about intervention and enrichment because they do go hand-in-hand. But this year, as a district, we're really focusing in on anchor statement three and building high-quality assessments. So looking at the process of looking at our essential standard, looking at the DOK level, so that the knowledge, the rigor of the standard, writing quality assessment questions that assess at the rigor of the standard and the depth of knowledge of the standard. And then refining or reflecting upon our practices. So all, up until now, we have introduced two staff across the district, the different types of assessments. Looking at formative versus interim versus summative. And really focusing in on formative because ninety percent of our time assessing is formative assessments. We're doing this daily in our classroom, these guys are doing this every single day, and they're making moves based on where they see their students are at in that moment for the next day. Those are our formative checks, those are formative assessments, and that's what we're truly focusing in on. And even our end-of-unit assessments, those are formative because it's all about learning. What are we doing for learning? We're not at the end, we have a whole year for our students to truly learn the essential standards. And some standards, I'm going to use English as an example, they're grade-banded. So really, our ninth and tenth graders have two school years to learn those standards. Same thing with our eleventh and twelfth graders because they're banded. And so that's what we have been focusing on, we're moving into focusing on how now do we actually write those quality questions? And when they're not at the rigor of the standard, what's the process that we go through to reflect, refine that question, take it back to our collaborative team, and continue with the team to say, have we hit the rigor of the standard? If not, what do we need to do to continue to build the system?
Okay, so as I understand, the state of Wisconsin adopted Common Core as the standards. I have read every single Common Core standard for kindergarten through eighth grade. No?
The state of Wisconsin has not adopted Common Core.
Okay.
Yeah, that was about, I want to say fifteen years ago, but it is now called Wisconsin State Standards.
Okay, so those, those standards, okay, there's based on these, every state based their standards on these basements. You have a standard, it's usually at a C level, from all of my experience in education for twenty, thirty years. So I would like to see that when you're doing these formative assesses, when you are teaching to these standards, that you teach beyond the standard, above the standard versus at the standard. Is any of that going on?
Currently?
Yes.
I think, I think, I think that's slightly unfair, if you just be respectful, I don't know if that's a fair question.
Yes, it is.
When you, when you look at, explain, when you look at like the social studies standards, right? You get this, we have four basic standards and then appropriate to four other standards.
Okay.
Standard one is, I don't have enough on there, standard one is like cause, standard two is, is effect. And when we break them down into the learning targets, we have things that are like collegiate level, like in, in, in the standard, right? And that, that goes for, I'm sure it's through science, math, and English, right? What we are focusing on is the grade level appropriate for it, which is what can we guarantee that all students will learn? And that means all, that doesn't mean the kids who we teach themselves, who we set a boat down, they walk in. That means the kids that historically have been out of love with me in school, right? We are educating all of them, right? And so they are coming up, and it is a, teachers, this is where the skill in, in teaching comes in. If I know I have a student that can write at a different level, I'm going to push them to that level. So is the, is the instruction of that specific one class going to be at collegiate level? Absolutely not, that would be inappropriate in my classroom, right? I, I sophomore, so learning those skills. Can I push the expectation of the assessment that I'm giving on those students who are capable of, once I know that they're at that level? Yes, and I've heard, that's not fair. I said, yeah, it is, right? You are capable of far more, so you will give me far more to get that A or that B than you will.
Okay, so I'm not...
That's where that, that piece comes in, but we cannot guarantee that every single student can learn at the collegiate level.
I'm not asking them to all learn at the collegiate level, I'm asking them to learn at the upper end of their grade level.
And that's where this process comes in. If we look at an assessment and we get done and we're like, that was too easy, then we adjust and we make it harder, right? We raise the level each time, and that's the point of the collaborative process, and that's what we're learning this year, right? It, it takes time, and we know that. And most of these people here right now, I wish I could, right? But we have to establish that base information first, and that's really what we're doing this year. We're establishing where is rigor, are we at rigor, or are we below? And if we are below, that's where we have those conversations, how do we make that, add that conversations?
It is our job as school board members to make sure that our students are given the best education that they possibly can, given the, the teacher, teaching staff the best that we can provide in order for them to get the highest standard that they can get. I want to make sure that we aren't just letting them just passively get their education, that they're aggressively getting their education, they're aggressively making those neurons and synapses go so that they can achieve higher and higher. And that we don't leave these kids that are, due to whatever ACs they are, behind, and that they are being pulled up by their peers or by you as the instructor of the, of the classroom, pulling them up and make, getting them to achieve beyond what they even think they can achieve. That's the most important thing to me, and making sure that, because when you do that and you get them thoroughly engaged, there, that takes care of another issue that we have, and that's behavioral issues. Because if they're engaged, they're, they aren't screwing around. They're, they're going forward and doing what they're supposed to be doing and being more productive, and in the end, being very productive citizens, and that's what we are trying to turn out as educators is a productive workforce, a productive community, and an enjoyable lifestyle for the community at home.
With all due, with all due respect, I think that everything that you've stated is, is very true. I'd welcome you to come visit and see what we do.
I, I am trying to get there.
I, I think that like looking at a, at a group of teachers who are doing this and, and suggesting what you're suggesting is a little unwanted.
So you got questions?
Yeah, I do. When you say your individual assessments and then at the end of the class period, you want to reach a certain goal, in, in the classroom, is the teacher given the autonomy to kind of get it, get there on their own? Or like two history teachers aren't doing exactly the same thing, they kind of have their own approach to it? You do, okay, that's good.
We have, we have the, this is where we would like to be, the depth of knowledge, and this is the, the learning target we want you to hang on. But we do have autonomy, if we're teaching the same thing here, we can do it a little bit differently, in fact, we must, because in our collaborative meetings, when we come back together, I say, hey, I, I can get them, what did you do? Scott tells them.
Okay. I think a lot of that is all part of the PLC process though. I mean, you, you know, you're talking about going higher, but part two of the questions are, what do we, what do we do if they don't? And what do we do if they do? And that's all part of this PLC process, you know, going back and re-teaching, giving those extensions. That all comes into play with all of this. It's just not a one-time and one-class for one-day thing, it's, it's all the time for everyone. It, it's part of the process.
Well, that, that was the reason we were pursuing the PLC because, but you, you inherit someone in the tenth, eleventh grade that didn't get it in the fourth, fifth, and sixth, guess what? You have a pretty CPO. So now with this being, you know, concentrated throughout the district, the results are going to be there. I mean, I can just see what you're saying, the only thing I wanted to say was, I, I wasn't going to dampen it, but I, I don't, I don't like the halo effect either, there are, there are some things that are going on, but I'm, I'm pleased, I'm happy. I can see it in the confidence, I can hear it, there's an excitement there that I think is good, thank you for what we're doing.
This is third year or fourth year, PLC?
Well, it depends which one.
Can I just add one other thing to, one other thing you touched on, Teresa, was about, you know, the, the, maybe the lower level and bringing them up, that type of thing. I'm a special education teacher.
Right.
I'm in the classroom with the kids in that department. So we have a lot of students, a large, large majority that are not in full-class classes anymore, that are in the general education classes, that kind of fit into what you're talking about there. And they are maybe struggling with some of the concepts, and they're being introduced to high levels of learning, and that does bring them up, and so that is a part of it as well.
Thank you, that's what I'm getting at.
Yeah, it's, it's a hundred percent a part of it, and literally what I do every day, so.
Awesome, great stuff. I know it's a work in progress, which is headed in the right direction, it's fantastic to hear these updates, looking at the work we're doing.
And that's what I wanted to know, is the, the work in progress, where are you, what are you doing?
Thank you for giving us that.
Thank you.
Thanks for being here.
Thank you.
Okay, next, we have service to the Toma community, and under that, we have acceptance of gifts, of money, and/or materials.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This evening, we'd like to thank Deg and Hart Hire, donation to the FFA program, a donation of $220 towards the pancake supper from WRJ Acquisitions, a donation to our powerlifting team of $500. From the Toma Sports Boosters, donation to DETA for their Change for Cheer fundraiser, a $500 donation. From the Spirit Pump Donation, Simram Corporation, to Toma High School, a $513.78 donation. From the Toma Gridiron Donation to THS for the football field paint, five, $600 donation from Toma Gridiron Club. From the Warren's Cranberry Festival, a donation to the Warren Safety Patrol trip to DC, $800. From the Matt Worstein Memorial, a donation to Toma Athletics, an amount of $2,460. From Jenny Kilpatrick, a donation to the Toma High School van trip that are heading to New York, $2,700 donation. And from the Toma Sports Boosters, a donation to the Toma High School football team for Guardian Caps, $4,992. $13,315 aggregate donation, as you always see so many wonderful donations to multiple Toma highs in the district.
Cool, I'll make a motion that we accept all our donations and graciously thank all of the donors for their continued support of our students in the school district. I'll say it.
Motion by Sue, and a second by Heidi, oh, favorite, I, I oppose. All right, great to see all that support. Okay, next, we have future focus, and under that, we have an update on the Rachel's Challenge, chain reaction events, and requests to support for adult volunteers.
So when we call about a year and a half ago, we wrote a grant through the state for stronger connections, and we aligned that with Rachel's Challenge. And Rachel's Challenge is a national program that was organized by parents of students that was... And last year, we had all of our elementary, middle school, and high school students attend presentations by that organization. Special trainings for our middle and high school students for, it's called For Rachel Club. We also, elementary students were able to have weekly lessons for the annual school year. And then we had chain reaction events for our middle school and high school. And basically what that was is that a group of high school and middle school students, seven, I think, five different ages, came together and did small group activities, learned a lot about themselves, about each other, how to be a good friend, how to reach out with kindness to people around you. Because the whole premise of Rachel's Challenge is anti-bullying. Because the whole premise of Rachel's Challenge is um anti-bullying, um making sure people know that if you're not playing suicide, that there are people out there um that can help you. And saw a very positive um reaction out of our high school students that did this day long program. Then this year, um we came back from the second year, our middle school and high school did the second year program with that. And we are again having um chain reaction events in February. Uh the response from students has been overblown and we have about a hundred kids for each of those days in the ninth and sixth grade classes at the middle school, high school. That want to participate in, in this event. But we can't um have that many students if we don't get some more volunteers. So we're reaching out to see if school board members or community members in general can help on a certain day. There'll be things going on on Facebook shortly, we're organizing, or we're emailing like um some business or some organizations in town just to say, spread the word. Um we, we need about twenty more adults to help between the four days. We have had a good response, but we don't wanna turn any of these students away from this. And um the ratio is supposed to be like four to one for students. Uh but when I participated last year, um in talking to the presenter, uh she said, we really can be getting five or six students per adult so we're, we're aiming for that success. So we'll still need twenty adults. So if any of you are available on any of the days that um if the information is embedded, please um reach out to me. And if you signed up for one, two, three, or all four days, if you'd like.
Okay, and that's a full, full day, I mean.
Yeah, you, you have to be there the, the whole day and you really don't need, you don't need anything, um we don't need anything, any special training. Everything that the adult does, it, it's just script or, or it's right there with a facilitator, really wants it. And yes, Sue presented, we all participated last year.
Yeah.
On a, you, do you need any special training to do this?
No, I do not. Um you just facilitate, because we, there are a lot of large group activities, they do a thirteen building and then they break out into several different sec, times, you break out into smaller groups. And you just facilitate the um conversation, you have a list of questions that you kinda talk about and, and discuss a little bit. And it was eye opening for me especially, um to realize that there's so many kids going through so much that we don't have any idea. I think it was eye opening for each of them, because the groups I had, I don't think very many of the kids knew each other at all, so they were all strangers to each other. And they just realized that everybody here is struggling with something, some of it's big, some of it's little, some of it was. Ugh, it was a very emotional day, would you stand? Very emotional for me, um but it was a great learning experience.
And last year we utilized the fairgrounds for the high school and um Cranberry Country Lodge, Tyson and Julia donated the room at uh for the middle school. This year we're doing all four days at the um Cranberry Country Lodge, it's just a little bit more.
Homie.
Homie, thank you. And um like I said, the grant is paying for all of um the materials, the presenter, the food for the day and everything, we just need some more of those. It's, it's worth participating if you can.
Cool.
Could we get it on the chamber newsletter by chance or anything? I know they have like a volunteer spot and stuff like that for that.
Certainly, you know, we'll reach out to them tomorrow or Thursday.
That's good, yep. Cool, thank you everybody for taking a look at that, bringing that to our attention, we'll definitely look at my calendar.
Okay.
Yes, see, thank you. Okay, alright. Okay, uh next, uh we have workforce engagement and under that we have a review of the discussion from the meet and confer meeting that was held on January twelfth, twenty twenty-sixth. And just a note that the next meet and confer meeting will be in March twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-sixth here at Robert Cooper starting at six. So we can have a review of the first one, or the one on the twelfth.
Okay, so the, we had a, um pretty good response from the um teachers. And I'm just gonna go highlight about three or four things, there's, I have a huge list of suggestions. Um one that struck out to me was um tier pay for sped teachers depending on the disability level. Um more, the more disabled and more involved um of education or hands-on. I can't explain it to the public very well, but um the more involved of a student's population, the, uh they're asking for. Possibly um increase in pay and tier it up to less um involved. Uh a change in the pay schedule from um nine months to twelve months for um uh support staff. Uh shouldn't cost, it, it's done with um certified staff, so that, that's just one thing that one of them had brought up. Uh they requested some time to go to uh do P D at CISA. Uh for support staff, a little bit more of that, or they actually go, wasn't real hundred percent sure, but they, they're asking for more um professional development. And then um staffing at the middle school, more staffing uh for the sped classrooms if we can. And possibly having comp time in place of being paid if they have to sub, um if teachers have to sub for their colleagues. Possibly earning comp, comprehensive time versus, so that they can take leave out of, um use that kinda stuff for doctor's appointments. Or instead of um taking, I don't know what they actually uh make, because it depends on which person you're talking to. Uh because it's based on salary, so um and then I think. I think that's most of the highlights, I don't wanna take the full time.
Okay, were you thinking?
No. No, it was Katie.
Katie.
Katie, okay, okay. Thank you, all, wanting to say thanks about those, so those are all good, so the next one is March twenty-sixth.
Yes.
Here at six and five. Any question for Teresa?
I have a whole list, if you, if you really wanna see what they did, I can kinda decipher my notes.
Thank you for being a part of that. Alright, uh next, uh we have financial operations already done with, we have no unfinished business, so we'll move into some new business. Uh beginning with a consideration and possible approval of special education open enrollment spaces that are available for the twenty-six, twenty-seven academic year.
Mr. Chairman, and more, administration recommends the board approve zero, zero. Open enrollment spots available, uh Dr. Sprofronic has done another deep analysis this year to review possibilities of those. But due to staffing considerations in the current case load, we highly recommend zero open enrollment for twenty-six, twenty-seven school year.
Any questions? A motion through that one? Motion by Teresa to a second?
I'll second.
Second by Rick, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Alright, motion unanimous there, alright, and the next one, in the same vein, is a consideration and possible approval of the regular education open enrollment spaces that are available at. If we want to be separate, well, if you need, at the elementary schools, the middle school, the high school for the twenty-six, twenty-seven academic year.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, as you see here, the board of ed, uh and all board members, we recommend that we do have spots available. Uh at the elementary school, the middle school, and the high school for the twenty-six, twenty-seven school year. Administration recommends approval of the open enrollment spots as presented on the document.
Do all three at once, all three levels at once?
Yeah, we find, yes, sir.
Any questions about those, or I would entertain a motion as presented?
If the motion could include elementary, middle, and high school, I don't have to bring it back in January to hang up. It's a old joke, it's twenty twenty-three. Make sure we get all three of those tonight.
Okay.
And make a motion.
Okay, a motion by Spencer to approve the open enrollment at all three levels, including elementary, middle school, and high school.
I'll second.
Second by Teresa, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay, um next would be the consideration and possible approval to cancel our Monday, April sixth, twenty twenty-sixth board academy meeting due to it being a holiday.
So today technically certainly is a holiday, but if you just take a look at the April calendar, I wanna thank Michelle for taking a look at that too. Uh the sixth is right in the middle, we'll, we'll be off on the seventh, uh coming back to school on the eighth, I believe. Uh but if you take a look, that, that's actually our spring break uh through that area, so we're recommending to not have that one. We'll be very busy in February, March board again, there's a lot of content to do there.
Don't hate me, all of you don't hate me. On the timeline of us hiring a superintendent, if we do not find somebody in that final interview process or anything. We would need to deliberate as a board before the election. The election is on the seventh.
So do we have to cancel this far in advance, or can we add?
If you cancel this, we can just uh make a motion to, you've got a couple of months to schedule all those, I can debate.
Should we table this?
Can we table this and then we could bring it back?
Oh, I see, you're saying.
Or would it be easier just to ask?
Or, um if you wanna table it, that's, that's mine, I guess it's your meeting, so it's just um.
Again, I just say it in the collaboration process of like, if we do not have somebody that Mike is gonna go to to go to contract and go to action. We should sit down as a board of education to figure out what we're going to do as our next steps.
Then why not put it?
I, I'm just saying, I'm just trying to say, keep that on the docket, because the week before, we should, if we find somebody, we should be going to negotiation.
We only, we need to basically add a meeting within like twenty-four hours, forty-eight hours?
Yeah, so you can notice a meeting in twenty-four hours, so I, I would recommend canceling this one and, and you all can uh get to your February meeting. And even in March, you're gonna have a lot of meetings in there.
Right.
And so you're gonna wanna, if, if you're gonna get to the twenty-third, you're gonna wanna come out of that and say.
I'm just saying, if you get in your back here and.
So we can keep that night open?
Yeah, just so you know.
I'm gonna keep those two days open, so this is an inventory.
That's a good, that's a good thing that I know.
Cancel, you're gonna need to hit the ground running pretty fast and notice that meeting within a day or two, so you, you would have, you'd wanna get that one done before the end of March.
Right.
So I think, I think you're safe, our recommendation is, uh we take this one off the table, we all.
Right, we keep that night open?
Tell the superintendent to.
Let me get to it, sorry.
Special meeting.
You're gonna have to go after your line is open.
What, April sixth?
April sixth, yeah, just technically as a, if, if this motion goes through, there would not be a meeting scheduled, but just, that could be an open night that we needed at the kinda last second.
Okay.
So. If anybody wants to, somebody want to uh make a motion as presented to, to cancel that meeting?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, Rick makes a motion to cancel the April sixth for now, uh do we have a second?
Sue.
Sue?
Spencer can.
Sue.
Sue. The motion by Rick, a second by Sue, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay, uh, four to two, four to two. You got, you got that, Michelle?
Yes, thank you.
Alright, perfect, nope, it's all good. Uh so I believe then we have upcoming events and activities that are embedded?
Yes, take a look at the uh Chamber Commerce Meeting, that's coming up in February. If you wanna reach out to Sheila and myself, if you'd like to go, if you know how many at your party, we'll get you. Uh to that, we normally have eight at our, uh today, just budgets are at our table, and so it's a great opportunity.
Sorry, thank you. All good there, um just make note of all those and we're good. Alright, so next, uh we will look at a contemplated closed session pursuant to the Wisconsin statute, section one nine point eight five one C. For discussion, consideration, and action as appropriate regarding the administrator request for a waiver to administrative contract. Reconvene in open session to act if appropriate on closed session business and/or to entertain a motion to prepare. So I would need a motion to go closed.
Someone.
Motion by Heidi to go closed, I guess I can take a second by Rick, and that will be roll call.
Wait, yes.
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
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 Alright, we will be in close as soon as we can empty the room.